All right, it is 7:00 PM. This is Thursday, December 10th, 2020. This is the Alvernet City Council meeting. I'm going to go ahead and call this meeting to order. I am going to do a couple of things out of necessity, out of order this evening. The first thing I'm going to do is before we get to some of these agenda items, I'm going to go ahead and move our item number five to the top of the agenda before we get started, which is our sheriff's report. Our deputy sheriff is present for us the evening. I want to make sure that we get to him timely and that he can get back on the road, the safety of all of our citizens, before we receive the report. Deputy, would you like a bottle of water or anything to give you this evening?
No, I'm good, thank you.
All right, very good. Then we'll go ahead and hear the report. Happy the report has been placed in the packet. You have an opportunity to review it, I'm sure. If not, you have these hours in front of you. We'll go ahead and recognize our deputy sheriff to give a summary of the report.
Forty-three hours required, put in one hundred and twelve and a half, twenty-four calls of service.
Very good. Council, any questions on Lynn County Sheriff's Service Log?
I don't have a question on the service log, but I do just have a general question. Does Lynn County have, like Cedar Rapids does, where you can sign up the camera system? So you can, if there's a burger in the neighborhood, you can contact me because I have cameras. Does Lynn County have that, or is what I'm saying against...
Like a website?
Is that what...
I don't know.
I don't know what Cedar Rapids works. Ah, so it's a program where people with their own private security cameras on their homes can go ahead and log that with, like, in this example, in the county with the sheriff's department, and say, "If you have a crime in this area, these are the people that have cameras willing to participate."
Uh, no, not that I'm aware of.
Okay. Any other questions for you? Sir, we appreciate you coming in. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a safe evening.
Thanks.
Okay, with the sheriff's report out of the way, one other item that I was generally going to... Things that I generally discuss in my mayor's report, I just want to note that here in the city of Alvernet, we do do the pledge of allegiance. This is my last council meeting as mayor. I'll talk about that a little bit when I get down to my mayor's report. But there's a few things that I am presenting this evening, one to the city of Alvernet, and one to the fire department. For the city of Alvernet, you'll notice on the wall over there is a flag that is stainless steel, is handmade by a small company in Nashville that does those. So I had that ordered and placed on the wall. We have our flags here that we place for the city, but they're difficult. If we do our pledge to this flag, to turn around and do that. So this particular flag we had placed there, it's dedicated to the city on behalf of myself and my wife, and it has the pledge on it. So I just wanted to note that that is given to the city. I hope that you display it here in City Hall, and it gives the opportunity, if you continue on with the pledge, that'll be up to the new mayor, but that you can face there and do it without... In the past, we've done it electronically, so. Anyway, that being said, we'll go ahead and conduct the pledge allegiance for this evening. We ask that you again, give the pledge. We will do it as the council, though. I'll lead as the pledge allegiance. Do the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right, with the pledge completed, we'll go ahead and conduct the call to establish that we have a forum to conduct this this evening. Would you then do that for me, please, quickly?
Councilman Trump.
Present.
Councilmember Bozenberg.
Present.
Councilmember Saracen.
Present.
Councilmember Menz.
Present.
Councilmember Shon.
Present.
Let the record reflect that we do have a forum for this evening to conduct business. All right, we'll move on to the approval of the agenda. Do we have any changes to the agenda as submitted?
We do not.
Very good. Seek approval of the agenda then.
Moved.
Moved by Bozenberg, and I believe the second was by Saracen. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Sheriff's report has been completed, and we'll move on to number six, which is the mayor's report. I've already talked about the flag that has been presented on behalf of the city. Also, I've mentioned that this is my last evening as mayor. I turned in my resignation last month. I've already mentioned, if you didn't know, if it's a surprise to you folks in the audience, I've taken a position with the Iowa House of Representatives, and I can't hold two offices, so. Mayor Pro Tim Saracen will be taking over, and we'll address that a little bit later on in the agendas. I do want to say Merry Christmas to everybody, and the decorations look good. I don't know if we're putting any more up anywhere or not. If they're completed, I haven't been all over town. They are completed. We just have two that aren't working, and we're waiting for an electrician. Okay. Thanks. Good. So that being said, with the Christmas information, holiday information, that completes my mayor's report. We'll move on to the council reports. We'll start from the right and start with the councilman Trump.
Well, that's Lynn's report. Just want to see if it's been good working with her.
Yes, thank you. Appreciate it.
Watch the good things, right?
I think we have. We, between our projects with City Hall and some of the stuff that we did, we spent some time up here working on this place and threw a little vein around and did some good projects within the city, so I appreciate that. Councilman Bozenberg.
Well, just been a pleasure working with you, and good luck in your adventure.
Yes, thank you. I think you swear me in as both a councilperson and a mayor?
Yep.
Yeah. Thank you. You've done the full circle for me. So yes, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Um, I like both of you. Thank you. Done a great job, too. Really appreciate all your guidance over the years. For my report, the only thing I have is we are having weekly standing meetings with Lynn County Public Health regarding the COVID situation. So nothing major to report at this time. They're working a lot through vaccinations and things. I know Fire Department was on that agenda as far as how volunteers will be handled, so we'll just see if everybody posted as we know more.
Uh, Councilman Menz.
Oh, as everyone else has said. Thank you for your service to the town of Alvernet. I really appreciate it. You've done a lot of great things.
Um, I think everyone knows that we came on together.
Yes, you did.
So this is, I would have been, this is five years. I would have had six as my mayor term, but I could see you continuing on with the council, so. Councilman Shon.
I'd like to thank you for your efforts the past couple of years, and I wish you luck in your new endeavors.
Yes.
You're gonna need it.
Yeah. Yeah, it's gonna be a little bit different. Moving from bipartisan to partisan politics is an eye-opening experience, so. And also, thank you, Chester, for everything you've done with the city budget and assisting with that. That makes a big difference in this role as mayor, and I mean, Bethany knows that, too. She's done, it's still been enough that she understands that. But the council as an executive body making all the decisions and running the budget and taking care of the finances for the town, it really helps with the amount of time that you do on your own time throughout the month with the bills and the finances and approving the payroll and things like that. So that's very commendable, so thank you. All right, with that being said, we'll move on to item number eight, which is citizen comments. Here in the city of Alvernet, we have two types of comments, agenda items and non-agenda items. If anyone wishes to speak on agenda items, this is the time and place to do so. All you need to do is state your name and address clearly for the record. You have up to five minutes to address the council for any agenda items. Hearing none, we'll move on to non-agenda items. Again, if you wish to make any comments to the council on non-agenda items, this is the time and place to do so. Just state your name and address clearly for the record. You'll have up to five minutes to do so. And hearing none, we'll move on to item number nine, which is the written reports. The first written report comes from the fire department. Chief Graham has submitted this. It's in your packet. I'm sure you've had an opportunity to review it. The only thing, questions that I would have is, are you with the roll-off? Are you completed with that, or is it still?
I think we're good for now, just when we go through, a lot of stuff's in the office now. We gotta go through. We'll just do that when we move. You know, just maybe get dumpster whenever that date will be.
I'll call them now and take it.
It's three quarters full anyway. We should let stuff away.
Yep. No, that's fine. I'll have them take it out and tell them we're gonna need one back, so we're on this list.
Yeah.
No problem. The master is crazy, sorry. The, I know you've expended a lot of your internal funding for the fundraising that you've done over the years and stuff like that for equipment on the new facility. Are you doing all right for funding, or are you gonna need additional items, or do you know?
Um, we just approved some more stuff by the end of the night, so we should be okay.
All right, very well. Just a little reminder, the chief will have to be sworn in as he was re-elected as chief, so that'll be a January item, just so you're all aware. And my third item here is... Oh, sorry. Sorry. It's noted on your report, too, but my third item is congratulations on being elected. But I generally, it's an election, right?
Yeah, it is.
Appointed, elected, however you want to say it, as chief again. Is this your third term?
Yeah, I don't remember.
Okay. All right, anyway, congratulations.
Thank you.
And then finally, I would say for the fire department, although I will not be here when it's completed, when it is complete and done, if you would do me a favor, in this box right over here is a full set of new flags, bases, the poles, the top bars, all the gold trimming, and a U.S. and Iowa flag with trim. And they're the nice nylon flags and everything. And if you would place the, I'd like to donate it to the fire department, so you've got those when it's ready to go.
Thank you.
All right. Great. All right, thank you. That's my comments. Other comments from council then on the fire department report? All right, there's no other comments?
I do have a couple more things.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I got three people that want to take EMT. It starts in January, and it's about $12 per person, just so you know.
How many do we have now? I'm just curious.
EMTs? Probably seven. Hard to make daytime work.
I'll refer that to you. It's January. You want approval on that this evening?
Um, the class on track's all January 17th, so we can approve on January.
You need it for the 14th. You want to approve the 14th, or do you want to...
Any of these be available for daytime?
Um, one for sure, probably, for now.
Are these in person or virtual?
They're virtual. And then they'll go into Center Point Ambulance, it's hooked in it. It's out of College Marshalltown or Hospital Marshalltown. So it's a lot cheaper than Kirkwood, but it's all virtual, and they go to Center Point. You have hand-balled stuff, and they sell it to a hospital, and they're putting in, and right-hand animal service.
Doesn't sound we have an issue with moving forward on this tonight. So questions about this, or any concerns? Chester, do we have budget for this? We'll be good with budget?
I, we should.
Okay. All right, we have the fire chief's recommendation for, I'm sorry, coming to five?
Three.
Three, for three people for EMT class.
Well, there's three that are interested, so it could be...
Oh, the three people for EMT class in January 2021, $1,200 per person. The budget is available. Any questions on that? If not, seek a motion for approval.
So much.
Moved by Saracen.
Second.
Second by Menz. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. You'll go ahead and take care of that, Danielle. Thank you. All right, very good. All right, any other thing, anything else, Chief?
And just thank you for your service and goodness of fire station.
Yes, thank you. I'll be, if I'm not in session, if you do it during the week, if I'm not in session, then I'll come back for the ribbon cutting whenever you choose to do that. It may be spring now, I don't know, but whenever I'm available, I'll certainly be there. All right, then we'll move on to the public works reports. It's also been placed in there. I have also read it, other than, yes, the only question I have is any more concern with post-duratio cleanup as far as the compost or the...
No, we've been extremely lucky. As I said, the Kendrick Forest Products came and got all of the mulch-sized material. It's gone. Gary and Steve Bell have been hauling the compost, the smaller fire cut, like crazy. They intend to take, they think they'll take the entire pile. We'll be back to normal if they take that whole pile of compost. And we got rid of all of our logs. A gentleman outside, east of town, took all that to burn in his wood burner. The stuff that was so big, I didn't want him spending time grinding, he picked it all up himself. I didn't even have to load it. So yeah, we're doing great. So it's all working as it should. The only issue that's not on my report that I'll bring up before we ask questions is the siren. I'm sure many of you have noticed, it continually just loses time. In a matter of four or five days, it'll lose 10 minutes. There's part of the mechanicals in there that are loose. I'm sure something's broken. I don't know what. Now, the timer, it's not made anymore. It's old, super old. The little bit of research I've done, and I got a lot more to do, could be up to $1,100, $1,200 to put in one that will, you know, that is more modern, up-to-date, and will give us what we need to keep that siren going. So that's something to think about. I'll have more research on it next night. Just keep that in your spot pattern, so.
Do you have a future? Is this still a budgetary issue with EMT?
That this wouldn't be part of that.
So we're gonna turn anything over? That wouldn't be one that's gonna turn...
We'd have to get our siren at the old station and... We have, yeah, maybe be turning it up.
I didn't know if they'd take over everything if we'd let them or not. Okay, questions for public works? Okay, and we'll move on to item C, which is the city clerk's report. Also, had an opportunity to review this. Other than at the state level, I'll continue to track post-COVID issues, and we'll stay in contact with one another in that capacity at least. But any further comments on your report?
We're gonna continue to follow up with some nuisance events that we've been talking about and working through. We're gonna send out some reminder letters, that way you can follow up in the spring for some of the properties that we've been having issues with, and make sure that we're consistent with that. We're gonna continue to do the refugitation project and the handbook project. Still working with FEMA on reimbursement for the duratio expenses that we've experienced, so that should be an ongoing thing that we should hopefully continue to work on. And then working with the state of Iowa on reimbursement for some of the COVID-related expenses. Continuing to work on that. And then we've got the transition for your position with AC coming up, so we're gonna do some work on that. And I just want to thank you for all that you've done. It's been great working with you, and I know we're gonna miss you as much as you're gonna miss us.
We kind of came on together, too.
Yeah.
Yeah. After...
It's been fun.
Yeah, we parted shortly after I came there, so.
Thank you.
Yeah. Well, thank you. I appreciate it, though. Spent a lot of fun, so. All right, any questions for city clerk? All right, hearing none, we'll move on to item C. This is approval of the consent agenda. The minutes have been submitted. Are there any changes to those? No?
No, just the minute. We have the additional schedule meeting in there as well.
Okay.
And we've got two additional invoices to add.
I believe a copy of those have been handed out here. For the record, for the public, would you list those off for me, please?
One is for Keystone, in the amount of $133.50. And one is for, it's gonna be made payable to Power Plan through John Deere for a bulldozer that was rented, really, into the fire seashore project, in the amount of $1,580.
$1,580. All right, we'll let the record reflect that, if there's one there. Chester, any issues with either one of those? Questions from council with the changes to the, let the claims desk noted? Okay, if there's no questions, then I'd seek a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended. Moved by Bozenberg, second by Shon. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, no. Motion carries. Number 11, new business. This evening, we have Kayden, Mr. Kayden Williams with us, and I believe this is his family, and they're going to be, or he's gonna be giving us a presentation on an Alvernet, or proposal for an Alvernet community skate park. Sir, we are happy to have you here with us. We have your presentation electronically up on the screen. We also have some hard copies here, and so we'll go ahead and recognize you. You make yourself as comfortable as you need to, or you can stand or do whatever you want. Would you require anything else to make? Do you need a table or a chair to sit on or anything? What can we do to make it?
I'll probably just...
All righty. The floor is yours.
Hi, my name is Kayden Williams, and this is Grady Stone. We are 12 years old and attend Alvernet Middle School. I am here to ask the council to consider a skate park for the property that has been designated for our park mailing the firehouse. Alvernet would benefit from having skate parks. It provides an opportunity for physical activity, and there's no safe places for kids to skate in town. The closest skate parks are Marion, Cedar Rapids, and Manchester. There are not many activities for teenage kids to do in Alvernet. A skate park would demonstrate the commitment of our town to its youth, commitment of our town to its youth. We live on Longworth Avenue. There are more than, there are more than 40 kids on our street alone. Of those 40 kids, at least 50% of them, both boys and girls, use scooters, bikes, and skateboards, and would benefit from this type of park. Alvernet already has two playgrounds with slides and swings, and there is another soon to be added at the ACDC facility. Some requirements would be, it would need to be easy to walk, easy, safe and easy to access via sidewalks. A skate park should be free for the community to use. And most importantly, it should be inclusive for all ages and abilities. The average cost of a skate park is between $20 and $40 per square foot. As an example, a 1,500-square-foot skate park would cost approximately $50,000 to $60,000. Funding options would include grants, community fundraisers, donations, sponsorships, and public funds and volunteer. I hope the council considers the park a legitimate investment for our community. Maybe for your time, I would be happy to answer any questions you have.
Very good.
Good job, Kayden.
Excellent job.
You mentioned skate park, 1,500 square feet. Does that pretty much represent a 1,500-square-foot park?
We didn't measure it.
I didn't measure it.
We didn't really measure it.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, I think the one in Manchester is approximately 1,500 square feet.
Okay, does it have the same...
No, it's different. Every skate park that we've seen is different. And different in size, so it just would be...
It's all new to me. I'm just asking.
I should let him answer. This is his project really.
Have you been to the new one in Marion? On 20th Avenue? I was telling Bethany before, it does get used a lot. Marion is a considerably larger town than we are, though, so.
So that was gonna be my question, Kayden. I have a couple, I know you guys have gone to some indoor ones and have been to different... Where would you recommend if we were to go look at a park? What's your favorite? What has some of the features that you really look for?
I like Marion and Manchester the best, because it's got some obstacles that are a little bit more tricky and a little bit easy, a little bit more easy than I like. They do.
What are some of the features that you would need at a skate park?
Um, like a few quarter pipes, so like this ramp, this one, these two, and something like, some stuff like on the edge to do, like opposite from the big area. And you want something like in the middle, like some, like this with some ramps or jumps, the flat area.
I have not seen Marion's or Manchester's, but the, where I work, the skate park is down the road, and I've been to it. They're the one in Cedar Rapids. It's sized both nice, just like Marion gets used a lot. They, it's been there for many years, and they seem to enjoy it. I'm, and maybe, I'm just a little confused on specifically where you want this located. Or maybe you don't have a specific location. It doesn't need to get, you said, near the fire station, but tell me, ideally, where would you like to see this located?
So like the, where the pump house is?
Yes.
Like, like by that area? Like, that's where I was thinking, where? Like around...
Just letting you know.
Sure. That is, that is a city-owned parcel. I mean, that is property that we do own, so I mean, it would be something that we could certainly look at. The, it won't be up to me, obviously, this is my last meeting, but I can tell you that we have looked at many different options over in that area as far as extending trails that are wider, like we have going out to the complex, a city park, play equipment, gazebos, larger facilities for rental and things like that. So I think something like this could potentially fit into that model. A lot of things are based on funding, public needs, you know, stuff like that. Some safety factors and stuff, but many of these parks you can, have been built, that are built safe and available for the public. So I think it's a nice initiative, and I think you've put together a nice presentation. In fact, it's rare that we get folks that give us presentations that are put together that's nice and thought through, so I certainly appreciate it.
He did it. He did it, I'm telling you, so.
I wouldn't have just came.
Well, you're like the Van of Light. You brought the equipment and the whole thing to that place, so, you know, it's a team effort.
And she's here, but, you know, it is boys' and girls' sport.
Right.
It's a boys' sport, you know, so.
How much of this could be done by volunteer, and how much would have to be contracted?
That would be more research that we would have to do at this time.
Just plant the seed here, then.
Right.
A lot of it's poured concrete, right?
Yeah. And you can get prefab. I think Manchester's park has some prefab. Some of their things are prefab. I think that might have saved them some money as well. I did, we jumped to Manchester, but I think their guy was, their person, I was gone for a couple of weeks, just to see how much it costs for them to build it, but I haven't heard back from him, he's not getting back in, so.
Do you know, were they successful with any grants there, or did they apply for grants?
Again, that's, I've reached out to them, and they haven't gotten back to me yet, but that is something we have reached out to Marion and to Manchester just to see, get some feedback from them and some information from them.
That's something that ECI could help us with, since they're looking for grants for other things, too. That would be one more avenue that they could help reach out to us.
As the mayor said, it comes down to funding, and getting grants for these things in a small town is tough, because grants typically go to where's the biggest population.
Actually, the Tony Hawk Foundation is helping the smaller towns with grants. Actually, their grant is for more of the design aspect, which is a huge cost in designing a park. So I've actually reached out to the Tony Hawk Foundation just to see, like, just to get some information on what their program offers as well.
It's good.
Yeah, it is a mid-year request in our budget cycle. That's kind of hard to get it approved in public funds, but you've actually come at a good time, because we're moving into a budget cycle. So your timing is, your timing is pretty good. Obviously, no fun to be here this year, but the, your timing's good.
Well, and it does, it's not an overnight thing. You know, it's not a thing that's just gonna happen. You know, it's, there's a lot of planning and design work and all that kind of stuff that has to go in with it as well.
I would suggest that you talk to the Lions and the Diamond Club also. Make it a community thing.
The Lions Club has some funds that they kind of need to figure out something to do with right now, so that would also be... Yeah, and there's no reason why it couldn't fit into a bigger project out there, too. Yeah, absolutely. Because 1,500 square feet isn't that big of a footprint, you know, really, in the grand scheme of things. And it looks to me like it's a pretty low-main-ness operation. You know, you're gonna have to check on some railings, make sure they stay tight and snug, and do a little crack ceiling now and then, but otherwise, it's not a, it's not a load on city staff to take care of it, unlike some other projects like that can be, you know, so.
I think Manchester's has been up since 2013, and I mean, theirs looks brand new.
They keep it maintained or painted or whatever, and I imagine it's, well, concrete metal.
What type of liability insurance do you check on? Would that be a sitting?
We looked into that for other various things, like when we were talking about a possible ice skating rink. And municipalities kind of have a, they, they get a push on that. Because, you know, if municipalities can be held liable for items like parks and swimming pools and splash pads and things like that, then no one would ever have any. And so a municipal policy is very generous. If a private person builds a skate park, completely different story. Municipalities, it shouldn't be a problem. We can check with our insurance, but it shouldn't be.
And that's like, a lot of. Signage for having to wear safety equipment and, you know, use it at your own risk. I think signage can help with some of that.
I think other cities can do it. We can.
Absolutely, yeah.
And I tend to agree, there's not a lot for teenagers and older children here in town.
Other questions? Well, thank you, sir. I don't want to make you stand there, all of you.
Good job, man.
And as a reminder, Kayden, that our, all of our council meetings are recorded. So if you want to review this later, show it to your friends or anything like that, you can re-watch this council meeting and your presentation on Me Too. And it's also a good reminder that you can help us with the comments that were made here tonight, and we can continue to follow up. I would think, again, it'll be up to the new mayor and council where it goes from here. But certainly, after this budget cycle is complete and then we get into the spring, we'll know more information about what that, how that area is, or they will know more information on how that area is gonna be developed. I know there's many initiatives in the development over there. Not only with the continuation of that addition. That's actually, I think, 12 additions when it's complete with housing over there. But also what we're gonna do recreationally over there. So you picked excellent timing to come and talk to the council. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, if there's no further questions on the presentation, then you go ahead and move on to item B, which is the vacant seat for the mayor. As we discussed earlier, after today, I will, after this evening's meeting, I will no longer be the mayor. So we'll have to go and look at the options for filling the seat. If you take a look at the, those options within your packet, the clerk has placed the Code of Iowa 37213 for the, filling the vacancy. I believe everybody on this council is familiar with the process because of the recent bills that we did for mayor and council seats in the past. So I think everyone here has done this before. But we'll just go ahead and cover it while we're here, since we're gonna need a motion here in a moment. If you take a look at the copy of the code in there, you'll see that you need to make an appointment within 60 days, 60 days if you choose to do so. I'll make an assumption that the city doesn't want to go, move to a special election. And you'd have to burden the entire cost if you chose to do that. But I'll receive comments here in a moment, and we can see what you want to do. But make any assumption that you do want to move to fill the vacancy. We'll need a motion to do so at the January meeting, and you'd have to give authority to the city clerk to go ahead and post that. Did I say anything incorrect?
You did not.
Okay.
I did get a call from the county that there is going to be an election in March. So they wanted to let us know that that is an option. But again, it will be a cost of $3,000 to $4,000.
Okay, so if you do have the option, if you want to pay for that and wait till March, which would force you into a position to take on all the duties of a pro temp for an extended period of time, which to me is unfair to you, but you can, you can also take that under consideration. So if, we'll go ahead and hear any discussion that you may have. And at the end of that discussion, we'll need some sort of decision and potentially a motion to go ahead and fill this position for mayor in January and to give authority to post the position to the city clerk. I'll open it to discussion now.
Have you, have you received any, anybody that's interested at all in it or other than?
As we discussed at the last meeting, I would be interested in taking the seat. I think this council is working very well. We're getting a lot of things done, and I want to hump that continuity. We have same people working together, and we can keep that on and moving forward. So it is something I'd be interested in, again, it's up to the council, but I, I'm too busy to get this done by point.
You left it right. Councilman Schatz, are you interested in being appointed as mayor?
Absolutely not.
Councilman Minton.
I'm with Chester about it. No, thank you.
Look, you will be mayor as pro temp regardless, but yes, you are interested in taking on the spot. Councilman Bozenberg, are you interested in being appointed as mayor for the rest of 2021, till November, anyway?
Nope.
Councilman.
I don't know real good about that.
It's your.
Let's move. We appoint the mayor pro temp as mayor in January and give the clerk authority to post the position?
Yeah, the January meeting, on the January 14th meeting, then, that motion will put it up for, allow you to do the vote. But we need to post it prior to that time to see if there's any other interest from the public, or if the public wants to try to reverse it or do a special election or anything like that.
Correct.
All right. Given that motion, then, by Councilman Trump, can I have a second?
I'll start.
Second by Minton. Any other discussion? Let's do it by roll call, please.
Councilor Trump?
Aye.
Councilor Bozenberg?
Aye.
Councilor Sereson?
Aye.
Councilor Minton?
Aye.
Councilor Schatz?
Aye.
All right, let the record reflect it with unanimous. We'll go ahead and post that and then have for January for a vote for the appointment of the mayor instead of special election for the Iowa. Thank you. All right, given that, then, that takes us to item C, which is the budget workshop schedule. We'll go ahead and I guess we'll have some discussion here. It won't include me, but I assume it's all gonna be in January unless you're gonna get this month. But do you have, you have some proposed dates? Would you cover that, please?
I put a calendar in the packet. We could look and see when the deadlines are. Our meeting in January is on the 14th. And at that time, we need to set the public hearing for the last levy. Your public hearing, that will be in February. So just wanting to know about dates and times at work for everybody to get together to start looking at the budget.
Traditionally, you've had either a budget planning meeting or the actual budget review. I missed it last year. I don't remember what day you did it on. Is there a preference, Chester? Do you have comment on this?
Well, Danielle gave me a set of documents to work. So I'm gonna go ahead and work that up now, between now and whenever. And then I thought I could sit down with Danielle, and her and I could go together.
Okay.
To cover the things that she's aware of and the things that I'm aware of, just to make sure we cover all the pieces. What payments we have to make, as far as our bond payments.
Is this something you want to do before a proposed date?
Right. I just, I just do this on my own. That way then, when we get ready to, where everybody will have a general idea what we know we have to have.
Any other comments in that council?
You mind if I join you on that?
Yeah, let's know.
Since I'm retired, I can do it during the day. So if you don't mind, I wouldn't mind joining you.
Look, do you think you'd be ready to review that, say, the week first of the January yet, or?
Well, I don't know whether it'd be first week or not.
Maybe like by the 12th?
12, two days?
Yeah.
All right.
Only the two, three that we have done.
All right, so a tentative review by January 12th. If not, then you'll take further action on the 14th?
Yeah, we can do that. We can say the 12th.
All right, tentative review on there with, two at a time is fine. So right now, it's set for Councilman Bozenberg and Councilman Schatz for this, for this initial review and set to supervise the rest of it. Not that two of you can't, two people can't meet, but you don't have to meet. All right. Is that all right with you?
Yep.
I'll defer all their action, then, on this to Mayor Pro Temp, Sereson, then moving forward in January. Any other discussion on that? Are you all right with that?
Yes.
All right. Unless you complete the budget workshop schedule?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
And we'll move on to item 12, old business. City of Alvernet, the capital improvement plan for the ECICOG. I don't believe that they're gonna be present this evening or try to get in. Do you want to defer to January on that, then?
Yes.
All right, we'll move that item to the January agenda since they're not present. Takes us to item B, which is the vision insurance through, I think it's a thesis.
Correct.
A copy of this is in your packet. We discussed this last month. Go ahead and move this forward for action. And it was from last month, you wanted specific numbers as to what this was gonna cost. If you take a look at the 2021 thesis plan options, you'll see a A, B, and a C. They're highlighted in your packet. You'll see the non-contributory amounts of $10.54, $9.56, $6.62 for the record. The action this evening would be for the council to decide on which one of these portions that they would pay. I believe what you're looking at here in the clerk will correct me if I'm wrong. This is the per amount per month per employee, correct?
Correct.
And the preferred plan is Plan A, which is the $10.54. So you'd be looking at around $21 for the monthly fee for that. Again, this was placed in your packet. I'm sure you've had an opportunity to review it, to see what you have for what is covered and what the cost would be. And this would be added to the cost that were already approved for our annual insurance for employees. I'll go ahead and open it up for questions at this time from council. Oh, do you want to add anything else to what I just said?
I do.
Okay, got it?
Yeah.
Okay. So questions about the type of plan, what is covered, or what the cost would be to add this to the insurance for employees?
I don't see a lot of difference in Plan A and Plan B, but for an extra $2 a month, I don't know if it's worth what it has.
Yeah, it looks like it goes by that level one to the level two, and I'm not sure exactly what else. And there are a few little nuances there, but I tend to agree it's less than a dollar. But then if there's no other discussion, it's seeking motion to approve Plan A costs at $10.54 per month for the approval of their coverage.
So.
Moved by Sereson, seconded by Bozenberg. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Oh, you know what? Let's, no, no, we can do that. All those, it's a little expensive. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries. Thank you. That completes the item B. We'll move on to the final item tonight, which is the fire station project update. Who's giving?
A few little delays as the entire year has gone. Last delay has been a line came and hooked the gas line in, but they didn't have all the pieces they need to hook the gas meter up. So that has slowed hooking up the temperature heater to heat the building up so that they can start doing some of the flooring work, which needs the building up to temper. The meter got installed today. So the portable heater is running right now. So per our construction meeting, I don't think anything has changed. They should be sealing the apparatus, plate floor on the 17th and 18th, and any other sealed concrete on those two days, which means the Monday, the 20th, 21st, all those surfaces should be good. And by then, the other flooring should be down. The reason that needs, is important is because a lot of stuff, furnaces, compressors for the cascade unit, all that has to wait to be installed until the flooring is down. Much of the other is complete, just needs cleanup. I mean, it's gonna be the little things that, 23rd is the date that we were originally given. I don't think they're gonna make it completion. I just don't believe they will. But they're trying, they're still trying to make that date. But with all the COVID and deracial-related delays that, you know, not much we can do about it. So waited a long time for a lot of materials throughout the process. So. But next week, according to the new supervisor on scene, excuse me, should be a very big week between all that flooring going on and then finishing up these other pieces. It should be pretty telling. We'll be down to almost a punchless level by the end of next week.
Questions for public works? Chief Graham, anything?
Okay.
All right. All right, then we'll get final comments from, from council. Chester?
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Brian?
Merry Christmas.
And happy birthday. By the way, it's his birthday.
Thank you.
All right, well, you know what, Brian? For you, you know, since you gave it to me years ago, and I'm not sure I've ever used it, then I would seek a motion to adjourn.
Move.
Moved by Minton, seconded by Bozenberg. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries.
Hey, you used it!